Good evening and welcome to the City of Hayward Planning Commission meeting for August 28, 2025. We are holding a hybrid meeting with some participants in the council chambers and others who have joined virtually via Zoom. This meeting is being webcast on Comcast TV, Channel 15, and livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and on the city's website. This meeting is called to order at 7:04 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, will you please call roll?
Good afternoon. Commissioner Goodbody?
Present.
Commissioner Hammond?
Here.
Commissioner Lowe?
Here.
Commissioner Myers, absent. Oops, sorry.
Mentally maybe, but I'm here in person.
Commissioner Stevens, absent. Chair Hardy?
Present.
Thank you.
We will now open public comments on non-agenda items. The public comments section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner within established time limits and focused on issues which directly affect the city or within the jurisdiction of the city. As the Commission is prohibited by state law from discussing items not listed on the agenda, your item will be taken into consideration and may be referred to staff for further action. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a Commission meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend Commission meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, or per se disruptive to a meeting will not be tolerated. Ms. Allen, do we have any public comments at this time in person or on Zoom?
There are none.
Thank you. So we will now close public comments and move on to item WS25031, the Business Friendly Hayward Project Update. It's a work session to review the summary of best practices report, analysis of Hayward codes and practices, downtown commercial analysis, and outreach summary for the Business Friendly Hayward project. Work session items are non-adjunct items and no formal action will be taken. Does staff have a presentation for this item?
Yes, we do. Thank you. Good evening Commissioners. Elizabeth Lanton, Senior Planner. Tonight Assistant Planner Sachi Co. Riddle and I bring you a new project that we've been working on with the Economic Development Division over the past several months called Business Friendly Hayward. This project aims to take a close look at the city's rules and processes regarding commercial development to see where we can remove barriers and the proverbial red tape to make it easier for businesses to open in the city and thrive here. Tonight's work session is meant to bring you up to speed with everything we've been doing so far with this effort and to get your guidance and feedback before we move forward with drafting revisions to our municipal code. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sachi to kick us off.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So by looking at the strategic roadmap and several downtown specific plan programs and a few new state laws, we've come up with two main outcomes that we want for Business Friendly Hayward. The first is to streamline permitting for businesses across our commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. So if there are businesses that decision-makers or the community members want to see in the city of Hayward, we want to make sure that our codes and processes aren't overly cumbersome for these businesses to be able to open. Secondly, we want to activate vacant and underutilized properties in storefront downtown. So there's a few properties that have been vacant for a long time in downtown Hayward, and in many ways, this is out of our control due to factors like the current market or challenges around the fault line. But what we want to do is look at the items that are in our control such as our codes or changes in process updates so we can employ these strategies to temporarily or permanently enliven the downtown area. So here you'll see the breakdown of the different phases of the project and our projected completion dates. So for research and analysis, we just recently wrapped up this phase. We partnered with Rincon Consultants. They are a planning firm that has helped the city in the past on long-range projects like the housing element update, and Retail Experts Metivation. Together, they were able to review surrounding jurisdictions, commercial areas, and municipal codes, and come up with a best practices document. Rincon also worked on an analysis of Hayward's codes and practices, which includes recommendations to the city for streamlining programming and activating our commercial areas. And this is where we'll spend like the majority of our focus tonight as we're preparing for our next steps of code updates and how we want to proceed. Metivation also completed a SWOT analysis of downtown, and they were able to identify some of our biggest strengths and then some areas where we could use some improvement. All three of these documents are available on the project webpage. For outreach and feedback, during the summer, we really put our efforts into this area. We have a website with more details about the project that also contains a link to our interactive dashboard that has results from our survey that went out to Hayward community members and business owners. We also conducted community outreach at the three street parties that were on June 10, July 17, and August 21. We've also met with CEDC, or Council Economic Development Committee, and the Downtown Hayward Improvement Association, and we will have a work session with City Council on September 23. So in fall and winter, we'll start focusing on drafting regulations and getting new codes and ordinances adopted by City Council. So we've made a concerted effort to conduct outreach for this project and get feedback from both community members and business owners and operators. We launched a webpage with more information about the project that includes the future public hearing dates. Our summer intern Finn Smith went door-to-door in various commercial areas throughout the city of Hayward and visited over 100 businesses to give them more information about the project and let them know how they could get more involved or provide more feedback to us. We also had a survey, as I mentioned, for community members and business owners, and we had 270 responses. As a part of the business owner survey, when asked how they would rate overall experience with permitting and licensing and scheduling inspections, business owners and operators rated Hayward a 3.34 star rating out of five. Length of approval times and information either being inaccessible or unclear were the biggest challenges that business owners face. As far as community members and their survey, although 48% of people who responded to the survey said that they shop in Hayward weekly, Hayward only received a 2.61 star rating and satisfaction with the current variety of businesses that are available. When asked what other cities and commercial areas they like to visit, respondents' number-one place that they like to go was Pleasanton, followed by Castro Valley and Fremont. The project webpage has an interactive survey results dashboard that was created by Finn, and you can find all of this information there as well as more. You can sort it by demographic or zip code. It's a very fun, detailed way to look at this information. We also have gone to the summer street parties to connect directly with the community and get their feedback on this project. Through our dot voting poster, which you can see in the slide, we learned that community members who go to the street party really want to see more recreation and more special events in the city of Hayward. Anecdotally, young families expressed a strong desire for more uses like breweries or cafes with playplaces because even though these uses are for adults, they tend to have a more relaxed and casual atmosphere where kids and pets are welcome. There was also a strong desire for a wider variety of restaurants and coffee places in the city of Hayward. Staff was also able to attend a Downtown Hayward Improvement Association meeting to introduce the project to members. The DHIA stated that they wanted to add teeth to the vacant property ordinance to encourage property owners to sincerely look for tenants instead of just checking a box. They were also interested in Hayward's own plans for their vacant properties downtown. The DHIA expressed strong interest in desiring to work with the city more on this project and to have continued involvement with and support from the city. Staff is considering how we can keep the community involved even after the municipal code has been updated, and some of the ideas that we've discussed are having a social media campaign that highlights various businesses in the city of Hayward, also quarterly meetings with business owners and a representative from the Police Department. We've also talked about doing biannual visits with the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, and Planning to be able to talk about new projects that we have coming and answer any questions or address any concerns that chamber members might have. Through our DHIA meeting, we were able to make a connection with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're going to work with them to create smaller focus groups of members so we can get more direct and in-depth feedback from the business owners. So as a part of the research and analysis, moving on from the outreach, our consultants, Rincon and Metivation, were able to find examples of these five programs in other cities around California and think that incorporating them into the city of Hayward would really help enliven the city. So cities like Fremont and Union City have simplified their zoning and made it more flexible to allow more diverse uses to come to their city. This would include allowing certain uses by right that have maybe traditionally needed a use permit and to refine our definitions in the municipal code to have it reflect the current market better. Active use overlays look to encourage vibrant and inviting community feel by requiring active uses on the ground floor along downtown corridors, and this would promote more retail and restaurants and potentially require use permits for more personal service uses like massage. The city of Hayward has strict regulations around cabaret uses, which look to regulate more intense uses like nightclubs, but tends to kind of discourage live entertainment as a whole. Using examples from Sacramento and Morgan Hill, we hope to create a live entertainment permit that helps facilitate more live music and activities downtown on a smaller scale or in already established businesses. And then San Francisco, like Hayward, has been struggling with vacant properties in their commercial areas, and they recently launched the Vacant to Vibrant Program, which looks to enliven vacant spaces with pop abuses like restaurants and retails. We hope to be able to take a page out of their book not only to help bring vitality to our vacant areas or vacant properties, but to help support newer businesses in the city of Hayward gain traction and customers within our community. And then finally, during COVID, restaurants were able to create creative outdoor spaces for dining when it wasn't safe or encouraged for us to gather in groups indoors, and it really helped their businesses survive. And a lot of customers really fell in love with these little parklets. And so that encouraged some cities like Pleasanton and Emeryville to create formal parklet programs to keep these creative and unique dining spaces, and Hayward's downtown and commercial areas could really benefit from this kind of activation. So these best practices have given us some strategies to help create thriving commercial neighborhoods, and the commercial analysis, which Elizabeth will be going over next, gives us a map of where and how to apply these practices.
Thank you, Sachi. So one of our project consultants, Metivation, who again are economic experts that specialize in retail, conducted a commercial analysis of downtown Hayward, which was included as part of Attachment 3 to the staff report. So the commercial analysis starts by looking at Hayward's, or downtown Hayward's, I should say, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. For strengths, Metivation found that our downtown is located in a great, accessible, central location and that its historic grid provides good bones for a walkable environment. In addition, we don't charge for parking, and we boast a diverse range of restaurants and businesses. Now, on the flip side, downtown's weaknesses include the poor one-way traffic circulation, that's unaffectionately known as the loop, the amount of vacant and poorly maintained properties, and then an overprevalence of certain types of businesses such as auto service and massage establishments. Opportunities for improvement downtown include fixing the traffic circulation issue, which I'll say the Transportation Division is currently working on as part of the city's Safe Streets project, and attracting live music and businesses that are focused on creating experiences to draw more people to downtown Hayward. And then finally, the potential threats to our downtown include the uncertain future of the movie theater and just the cost of making any improvements, particularly given the city's current budget situation. Now, the commercial analysis also included a demographic analysis, which found that we have three major demographic groups living within a mile of our downtown. They all have fun names I'll mention. The first, referred to as significant singles, is composed of single people earning mid-scale incomes who want to live an active city lifestyle. So in particular, this group likes dining out, nightlife and entertainment, fitness and wellness establishments, personal services like nail salons or shops, tech stores, and then also convenient shops where they can pick up daily essentials. Our second group, called flourishing families, is composed of affluent, middle-aged households who enjoy comfortable and active lifestyles. Now, this group enjoys many of the same things as our first group, our significant singles, while adding family entertainment, specialty retail, so this would be retail-focused on one particular product, and home and garden businesses. They're in kind of a different stage of life, you could say. And then finally, our third group, family union, is made up of middle-aged, middle-income families with more blue-collar type jobs. This group distinguishes themselves from the other two in that they like fast, casual dining options, grocery stores, affordable clothing shops, and also auto services. And then finally, our commercial analysis wraps up with a void analysis that identifies what new businesses our downtown market would be able to support if they were to come to Hayward. Specifically, Metivation found that there's a demand for more of the businesses located or listed in the green box, which includes restaurants, ethnic markets, personal services, and various types of retail. But on the other hand, we're currently oversaturated with new car, auto dealers, and furniture stores, both in and around the downtown area. Okay, so Sachi and I just threw a ton of information at you about what our community wants, about what other cities are doing, and about what our downtown market can bear. So what do we do with all of this? How can we use this information to improve the experience of businesses in Hayward? For that, we're going to turn to the remainder of Attachment 3, which is an analysis of Hayward's codes and practices. After combing through the various sections of our municipal code that regulate commercial businesses, our consultant, Rincon, identified several potential areas for improvement. First, like many cities, we require use permits to operate some types of businesses. Now, administrative use permits typically take at least three months to process, and they require an initial deposit of $2,000. Conditional use permits often take six months or more to process and require an initial deposit of $6,000. So for many businesses, and especially small businesses that are just starting out, these permitting costs and timeframes are frankly a deal breaker, and it means that many of these businesses are going to look to our neighboring cities to see if there's a place where they could locate that will have lower or a simpler permitting process, say. So while use permits are a good tool for cities, they help us control development, we need to make sure that we're not overusing this tool and inadvertently blocking desirable businesses that we want to see come to Hayward from being able to open up shop here. Secondly, and Sachi mentioned this before, our definitions of business types and categories have not kept up with the times, and this can be confusing to interpret, especially for new uses and emerging sectors. When they come to the permit center and say, you know, where am I allowed to locate, if they're not neatly defined in our code, it can be hard to say. Third, we have a lot of commercial zoning districts. We have nine base commercial zoning districts and nine mixed-use district. This, again, makes it really hard for businesses to come in and understand where in the city they're allowed to operate because of the intense detail in our zoning code. And then finally, the commercial sections of our code are lengthy, and they're difficult to navigate because they literally have not been updated in decades. So as a result, Rincon has the following recommendations for ways our city can revise the code to be more business-friendly. First, it suggested that we create a faster and cheaper permitting process for the types of uses that can really help activate our commercial cores. This could be temporary or pop-up uses, built-in outdoor dining, kind of permanent outdoor dining like we see in pockets along B Street, and small-scale live entertainment activities, because these are the things that will draw people to Hayward. Secondly, we should reduce permitting requirements for popular types of businesses such as establishments that serve or sell beer and wine, custom manufacturing uses where maybe textiles or pottery or other small goods are created, small health clubs, pet services, we've heard is very popular, and small-scale educational and training facilities. For some of these uses, this might mean reducing the requirement from a conditional use permit, which needs to be approved by this body at a public hearing, to an administrative use permit, which could be approved by staff. It could also mean potentially allowing some of these uses by right so that they can bypass the use permit process altogether. To go even further, we might want to consider establishing entertainment zones in specific areas, like maybe in pockets along B Street, where special rules pertaining to alcoholic beverages could potentially be allowed during certain hours and/or during certain events to encourage people to hop from one business to another. Another new idea that some communities around the country are starting to explore is to allow accessory commercial units, or ACUs. So one is shown in this photo here, but ACUs are kind of like ADUs, except instead of creating additional housing units on a site, it would allow a property owner to open a small storefront connected to their home, say to like convert their garage into a small yoga studio or a shop or something like that. So in Hayward, this could allow for the incubation of small or emerging businesses, especially in our mixed-use residential areas around the downtown or our Mission Boulevard core. And then Rincon also recommends that we reorganize and consolidate the commercial sections of our code so that they're easier to navigate, as we've recently done with our residential section of the code and then a little longer ago with our industrial section of the code. And then finally, it's recommended that we consider eliminating some of our smaller commercial zoning districts, including the residential office, the limited-access commercial, and the regional commercial districts by consolidating them into larger districts. So for example, on the screen, we can see on the slide, there's only one site in the entire city that is zoned regional commercial, and that's our Costco that's on Hispanic and Industrial. So this means there's an entire section of our zoning code that's dedicated to this one site, and there's really no reason that this site needs its own zoning district, as the Costco functions very similarly to other large-scale retail that we have around town. So as a result, to streamline our code, this district should be eliminated and the property rezoned to another similar commercial district. And with that, Sachi and I will stop talking, and we'll turn it over to the Commission for discussion. At this juncture in the project, again, we've done a lot of research, we've done a lot of outreach, we're getting ready to start making revisions to the code, so we just want to know, are we on the right track? Are there any of the recommendations that we just went over that you don't think are right for Hayward, something you don't want us to move forward with, such as, for example, making beer and wine sales more permissible, allowing small-scale entertainment activities with a faster and cheaper permit, identifying specified entertainment zones, allowing for those accessory commercial units? These are new ideas in many cases for our city, so we just want to get a gut check here before we move forward with any of them, or anything else that we went over. And then secondly, are there any types of businesses that we haven't discussed today that you think we should consider making the process easier for? Anything you've observed that wants to move into Hayward but has had trouble doing so, or something we've had trouble bringing to our community? We'd be interested in that feedback as well. In addition to Sachi and myself, Paul and Daniel from our Economic Development Team are also here, and then Jason Montague from Rincon Consultants is joining online, and all of us are available to answer any questions to help with the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you Planners Lanton and Riddle, and I will open it up now for Commissioner questions. Commissioner Lowe?
Thank you. That was a really good presentation. From my standpoint, I read through the materials, and I thought that some things were a little bit confusing, and most of the questions that I had as it relates to organization of the materials you've answered, so I appreciate that very much. However, I still have more questions. So I think this is the sort of topic where we really could have a discussion for three days. There's so much in these materials to go over, and I just tried to, what I heard you say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is just a beginning of getting our opinion. So my first question is, will there be, and I think I know the answer, but will there be opportunities throughout the process to, for us to continue to provide our feedback and opinions? This isn't the last opportunity, am I correct?
Good question. As we've done in the past for similar zoning updates, this we kind of see as an initial work session before we start drafting the regulations. We'll come back for another work session after we have draft regulations, and then as long as we're all kind of feeling on the same page and the council is feeling like we're in a good direction, then we would come back for final adoption hearings. So we expect there to be at least one more set of work sessions with this body and with the council before we come back with the final documents that we're asking you to make a decision on, or recommendation on in this case.
Thank you. The, one part that I am very concerned about is, you talked about how we really, in order to streamline it, want to make sure that we are actively looking at the code to see where we can create, eliminate conditional use permits in favor of administrative permits or by right. And I'm very concerned with which things become by right. That is something that I believe strongly should happen in some cases, but not all. And what I have seen in the past as it relates to residential developments that have come in are times where something was brought here for a permit, and then we discussed one thing, and then what ended up happening was something else. I understand that there is times where you can't control that as staff. However, as much as we can control that, and that meaning whatever the community would like to see is what we want to have built, not just have the developers run amok. And not that that's happening, but you understand what I'm saying. I want to make sure that if there is a vision for Hayward and how we are going to develop our downtown especially. So my question then is, how do you expect the process, specifically right now, my question is the process in determining which permits would go to administrative permits or go to by right? What would that process look like, and how involved would we be in that process?
Ultimately, this body will be making a recommendation to the council, but anytime we change the zoning ordinance, that's a council call. That's not something that we as staff can do. That's something that they would have to adopt with your recommendation. The way we're looking at it as part of this project is, there are certain types of uses that are very popular with the community that come in for, say, administrative use permits or even conditional use permits that are always approved, that are always kind of operating the same way. We never have problems with them. There's not like police calls to these types of businesses. So those are the types of things that we'd be looking at easing back the restrictions on. Again, maybe if we still want some control, dropping it from a CUP to an AUP. And if we're really finding, you know, even in the AUP process, we're not really putting any special conditions on this. We don't need a lot of oversight. All of our neighboring communities allow this by right, maybe allowing those things to be permitted by right. I will mention, even though this is called Business Friendly Hayward, there's a couple of uses, especially in chatting with our friends in the Police Department, that we are thinking about making more restrictive, because there have been problems with them. They maybe need a little bit more oversight. So I think our goal with this is just to kind of right-size the use permit process, to make sure we're putting the right level of review on the right uses. So if we have uses where maybe we've been overly burdening them with a level of review that's really not necessary, that's where we'd be looking to peel back. But definitely not everywhere, and definitely being strategic when deciding where to do that.
If I could just also add onto Elizabeth's comment. So the other thing about an AUP is that it is still discretionary. AUP still requires notification to neighbors, and even our current AUP process on projects that could be controversial, we always have that could be controversial, we always have the option, staff has the option, to forward that application to the planning commission. And so if we do have those instances where there happens to be a more challenging use or there happens to be something specific from the neighborhood that would require a more robust, higher level of discretion, that would still be maintained, so neighbors would still get notified. I think maybe what you're also talking about are uses that would just be permitted outright without any sort of notification, and that obviously is going to be a little bit more important to pay attention to because there is no discretion at that point and applicants can come in and apply and they can open up. So there may be some that would, could neatly fit in both of those, but I just wanted to reiterate that even with an AUP, that's still discretionary, there's still public noticing required, and there's still a process for members of the community to get their voices heard and again, present that or forward that to the commission or the council in the event that it would warrant that particular application.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And also, thank you, Ms. Blanton, for talking about how you were listening to our Hayward Police Department. I think that is very important, and I hadn't read much of that or heard much of that in the presentation, so it was good to hear that you are paying attention to where our problem areas are because I would hate to change a use to, get rid of a permit in an area where the police are saying that this is already a problem even with permits. So I'm glad that you are willing to make things, not just make things easier, but also make things a little stricter if necessary and only if necessary. Wanted to ask about the parklets. It sounded like you were very enthusiastic about the parklets, and I certainly have been to several cities during COVID where that was very popular. I am concerned with the fact that especially our downtown area is very narrow street, it is a one-way street. I did see in some of the materials, you were thinking of working with the transportation department to maybe make it a two-way street, but there is parking on both sides, and I am concerned about how parklets might take away from sidewalk space and the parking on both sides, and I'm wondering if it's necessary to have parklets? Or can you talk a little bit more about parklets in relation to what our city actually looks like and how it would fit into our city and what makes you think based upon how our downtown looks, not Pleasanton or some of the others, but what makes you think it's a good fit for Hayward?
I would say, and Sachi actually comes from Pleasanton, so we have an insider here, and they have a fantastic parklet program, so feel free to add anything I'm forgetting. When we were at street festivals, things people would point to are not necessarily like the temporary types of parklets, so we do have a program for that you are allowed to open up in front of businesses, but it was the permanent outdoor seating in front of businesses. Like when you're walking by, say Casa del Toro, as opposed to maybe a restaurant that doesn't have that kind of presence, it just feels like there's life on the street, like there's activity. Right now, our code requires an AUP for that kind of outdoor dining to be approved, and unless you're a pretty well-established business, restaurants have very tight margins and sometimes, you know, investing in that, if you're not going to be open in the long term, can be, can be a hard sell for businesses. I will say, working with our public works department on this, as they've been in our conversations as well, they are, they're engineers, they are always very, wanting to be protective of our assets, including the sidewalks and the right-of-ways to make sure there's not any like permanent damage or anything done to them, and that we're maintaining ADA pathways around these, which is while you'll notice in many of these outdoor seating areas, the sidewalk has been extended to kind of bump around them so that we're still having that sufficient space to go around. That might mean that we lose a parking spot here or there, so your point is well-taken, and this is not something we'd probably want to allow everywhere, but if it is something that this body and the council feel is important, I do think that having that outdoor dining really contributes to an active atmosphere, and it's something that we've seen be successful in Hayward as well. So I don't know if that fully answers the question, and Sachi, I don't know if you have anything to add.
I would just add that the parklet program would not be parklets by right wherever you want them. There are ways to implement it that really consider what the parking is that's available. We could say, you know, only these certain spaces are available to parklets, or there's ways to look at it that doesn't just take away all of the parking or usable space downtown that would still make it like an active and vibrant space to be that people could still access.
Thank you. Give me one second. I'm just trying not to take up the whole time, but I just have, this is such an important issue, I just want to make sure that I get all of my questions answered. Okay, I think I'm done. Thank you so much, I really appreciate your time.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Elizabeth and Sachi. That was a very good presentation. I think the last time, Elizabeth, you were with us, you were on vacation, weren't you?
I was, I was phoning in from Pennsylvania, so glad to be here in person today.
Yes, good to have you in person. And as a side note, on my vehicle, I have the AI voices that you could talk to, and I could pick from all these different ones, and I just have to say, Sachi, I wish I had your voice as one of my AIs. It's so crisp and clear, so thanks, that was a great presentation. Sorry for the little side note, but, okay. So a few of the questions I have, if, once this is implemented, so I'm leaning towards being more lenient on some of these things, I think that that's a positive direction to go. If we should be too lenient, I'm wondering how often we could make alterations to kind of rein in some of the leniencies on the areas that we find didn't work?
Unlike general plan amendments, zoning amendments are not limited, so it's something that if we as staff or, you know, the police department or any of our partners found, okay, this is really a problem, this is, you know, something that's getting out of control, we could come back to this body and then to the council to make that change. Also, keep in mind, let's say, for example, we're reducing a requirement for something from a conditional use permit to an administrative use permit, every use permit in the city has a condition of approval that says essentially, if this becomes a problem in the future, your use permit will be revoked and you need to stop operations immediately. So even if there's something that we're not comfortable making permitted by right, we can still have a level of control, you know, through the administrative use permit process, which is not quite as expensive and time-consuming as the conditional use permit process.
Okay, super, that's good news. I also want to echo Commissioner Lo's just slight concerns about what we choose to be by right and what we don't. I agree with that concern. I noticed on the community survey results that we were really, really heavy on the responders that were in the demographic age 60 to 79, but I also appreciate the business analysis that was done, and I'm wondering how are we providing a different weight to, to the one survey versus the analysis? Because I think that our demographics citywide are not as heavy as the 60s and 79-year-olds.
That's a great point. I will say that one of the reasons we do so much outreach in different ways is because there are certain groups that are more likely to like come to a street fair, you know, for example, as Sachi was saying at that, when we asked, what do you like about downtown? They all said, "street events." So it's like, okay, grain of salt, your people at a street event downtown, we know that you like them better. Similarly, people that, you know, we blasted out the survey on our stack newsletter through town, a lot of people that, you know, subscribe to that, read that, are a little bit of an older demographic, so we're kind of hitting that a little bit more squarely there. Doing targeted outreach with the businesses, again, there's some that are kind of like to opt into this kind of things, and then there's some that don't. So trying to kind of go door-to-door, work with the chamber, work with the DHIA, make small groups, make as many ways that are comfortable for people to contribute, but then also just know, like, as planners and then as our economic development team, we have a lot of anecdotal data as well from people, businesses coming to our counter and saying, "Hey, I'm really excited about this, I want to open this," and then get discouraged, you know, maybe because of a permitting process or something along the way. So it's definitely not like a super scientific, fully representative sample of the community, but we're trying to capture as many people as possible at as many different, say, demographic brackets as we can because we have a very diverse city and we want to make sure that we're making a place that's welcoming for our younger folks, just as much as we are a place that's exciting for our residents that have been here for a little bit longer.
Okay, thanks, yeah, that, that's, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't the end-all for all of our decision-making, but it sounds like it's definitely not, but a good resource. On the downtown specific plan, ED6, it talks about, it indicates improving and streamlining the entitlement process. Could you give me an example of what an entitlement process refers to?
That's a great question. Entitlement is a word that's basically synonymous with a planning process. So in planning, we say something is entitled, which has like a legal weight to it, you have, you have more vested interest in a project or a property once you're entitled. So we say you're entitled once all of your planning approvals are done. So this could be your site plan review, your use permit, anything that would have to go through us in the planning division first, that is considered an entitlement. And then things that would come after the entitlement would be like your building permits, your grading permits. These are things that are ministerial, they will be approved as long as they're consistent with like building code or, you know, or different grading codes and things like that. So the uncertainty in the development process lies in the entitlement. Are we going to approve this, are we not going to approve that? So yeah, generally speaking, entitlement means planning process.
Excellent answer, thank you. That makes perfect sense. Okay, another thing is, on B Street, I think I remember there was an approval for the restaurant, the Bart Train across from the movie theater, is that still moving forward? And if so, what is the holdup on it?
Great question. That is moving forward, it's called Arthur Maxx. It was, it was entitled, to use our new terminology, a couple of years ago. Since it's an outdoor restaurant concept, there's some unique like fire code and building issues that had to be worked through, which they were, many thanks to our economic development team for really coordinating internal staff getting that through. So their permits have been issued, so they are, I believe, under construction currently, so that should be hopefully opening sometime in the near future. But yes, they were working through the, the building permit and grading permit process for a little bit, which was the holdup.
Oh, okay, and I'm wondering if some of these changes that we're making will have helped and expedited that process for them in particular?
It's not, the changes here are not going to affect the building permit or, say, fire code, those are state codes, those are not things that we have control over, but we did have to have Arthur Maxx go through an entitlement process. I was the planner that processed it, and we had to make a lot of kind of creative interpretations of our code because again, this was a new use that wasn't really conceived of when our codes were originally written. So yes, I think allowing some of these kind of outdoor uses, uses maybe that potentially have entertainment or music as a, as a component of their business, these would be things we'd be looking to make, at least the entitlement side of the process, a little bit easier so they can jump right into their building permit process.
That's super, okay, and then as shown on the results of the outreach survey, it said most have issues with the length of approval times and the lack of communication from the staff. I'm curious if we've figured out what the reason for that is. Are we just short-staffed or is there anything that we are doing or can do in the future to mitigate that?
That's a great question. One of the reasons that we added a question at the end of every survey that was like, would you like to talk to us to give us more information, and many people, I will say, including many businesses, said yes to that, is because we wanted to dive in deeper into people's experiences. Again, anecdotally, we can, you know, kind of speak to, a lot of times, you know, people have the impression that they can just kind of come to the city and open up a business and, you know, you can get things approved really quickly, and unfortunately, that's not always the way that it works, especially depending on what kinds of approvals or permits that are needed. In terms of, you know, saying staff has not been responsive, again, these are things that we want to get to the bottom of. We really pride ourselves in DSD of being immediately responsive to staff, as does the city as a whole, but as the people that kind of handle development, we want to make sure people understand what the process is, they know what their next steps are, and that again, if there's holdups that are outside of our control, like building code or fire code, at least we're not the holdup on our end. So that's one of the reasons that we'll be holding these focus groups, to get a little bit more detailed information on that, to figure out if there's anything we need to do on our internal processes or training of staff to make that experience better, in addition to like updating the code itself.
And staff-wise, you're thinking that you have enough people or you might need a larger staff?
I would never speak to that. Planning manager, Lakirko, would you like to?
We have a great team, as you can see right here, and these are, these are two of our more wonderful, we have a whole deep crew in planning that includes landscape architects and engineers, and that's really our role, is to help people when they come to the permit center, to help facilitate that. As you know, as much as you see us and we deal with the public, we are not the only department or division that has to touch a project. And I, and, and so even though I feel comfortable that our division is, has plenty of capacity, there are challenges with other departments and other divisions because there are, you know, there are existing vacancies that they're having challenges filling. I would also say too, a lot of what we find is that, you know, customers may not necessarily understand the process or the route to kind of go from beginning to end, and so a lot of the times, you know, when we're talking, when they say they haven't heard from staff, every project that comes through and files an application, that's a 30-day review right there, and usually during that 30 days, there's not a ton of interaction because the project is under review by staff. We don't really have a lot at that point to communicate to. So if, you can imagine, if a project goes through several rounds of review, there could be several months in a row that maybe they don't talk to us, but we are, again, we're trying to be problem solvers, not problem creators, which is why we're here tonight, is because we've heard a lot from our community that there's been some challenges in trying to get open and to have our business, our ordinance and our land use regulations be supportive of business, so that's why we're here. We're trying to, trying to make it easier for them so that way, that, that comment that we hear is, becomes less, lesser and lesser every, every, every day.
Okay, thank you for that, and I am no way meant any kind of, you know, tick against you, I was merely referring to maybe possibly our budgetary appointments in the future.
I would also just add too, that, you know, in addition to just city staff, a lot of the applicants that we deal with require permits and approvals from other agencies that have nothing to do with the city of Hayward, and we don't have control over their timelines. That has created obviously some challenges for many applicants that are trying to get moving and trying to open up, and again, we try to facilitate those conversations with outside agencies, but of course, they're probably dealing with very similar kind of staffing or, or, or capacity issues.
Okay, and like Commissioner Lo mentioned, I'm not trying to dominate, but I do have just a few more questions, and then I do have comments, but I'll, I'll save those for later. So regarding the addition of parklets, I know that there are some people who live and small businesses right there on B Street. Do we have provisions or is there something written in there that would speak to the tenants that maybe live on the second floor there?
Do you mean in terms of like eliminating parking on the street that they might otherwise use, or like are you, are you thinking more about noise or kind of impacts to, to folks that are around there?
Basically for parking, because already I know that some of the tenants complain about lack of parking if there's a delivery, and we're just going to be reducing that. I'm all in favor of parklets, but I'm just curious if there's a place for that in the formula?
That's a good question. As Sachi said, that's something that we could definitely look at. Again, we're at the point here where we haven't written any of these things yet because we, you know, kind of just want to get a read to say like, do we like parklets? If so, then we can draft some language about that, but that's certainly something that we can look at to see, maybe they'd only be allowed in certain areas that have sufficient parking around them, that have maybe our municipal lots close by, for example. That is something that we could, we could add to the process. It's also something well within our right, if we did want to have like a permanent parklet program, in addition to our kind of more temporary parklet program that we currently have, to have rules or operating standards about how late they can, people can be in here to operate, how they're maintained, how they're lighted, you know, things like that to make sure that there's not inadvertent impact. impacts to the surrounding community. So it's certainly something we could look at.
Okay, great. I'll reduce this down to two more questions, how's that? So regarding accessory commercial storefronts, so I, I know, on a separate note, we have a lot of vendors in our streets. And what I'm wondering, and I'm hoping doesn't happen, is that now we just have vendors attached to the houses everywhere. And so my first thought is not to be too excited about adding this as an option, but I'm wondering, am I, am I looking at the wrong way, or is this a potential? And have we, have we considered that?
Yeah, it's definitely something that if the city decided that is something we want to explore, accessory commercial units, we could look at limiting the types of uses that maybe can operate out of a commercial, accessory commercial unit. For example, our home occupations, we allow home occupations, people essentially to work out of their homes. But we have rules around that, about what types of businesses can operate out of your homes, about, you know, how visible they can be to the community, about parking and all of those kinds of things. We could have a similar process around accessory commercial units. We could also be very strategic about where they're allowed. Maybe they're not allowed everywhere. Maybe it's not appropriate in all neighborhoods, but more appropriate in some neighborhoods, especially ones that already kind of have a mixed-use feel, like there might be a commercial building down the street, so what's having like another, you know, little studio or something attached to someone's house. Again, this is an idea that's relatively new. It's, it's happening around the country in different places, but it's not quite as established as, say, accessory dwelling units. So if we did want to move forward with this, we'd want to make sure we're crafting rules in a way that makes sense for Hayward. And really, the point of this is, it's expensive to start a brick-and-mortar business. It can be a lot less terrifying, you know, to convert your own garage into a studio than having to sign a lease with the landlord somewhere else. So it's really looking at opportunities to, one, inject neighborhoods with more little commercial pop-ups, but two, just to have an easier level of entry for some folks that are starting out.
All right, thank you. And then, I'll finalize with, you know, on Main Street, next to Aqua E Farina, there is a dirt, on Main Street and C, I believe it is, there's a dirt lot. And I believe it, I believe it's privately owned, I'm not sure, but it's dirt lot, and it seems like everybody uses that when there's city events. So I'm wondering if we've had any talks with them, whoever owns that lot, about paving it, or maybe meeting them halfway? And then I think if we paved it, this is to, to mitigate the parking issue downtown, if we paved it and painted it, then maybe we could make it more efficient, because we can allow more vehicles.
I don't have any knowledge about whether there's been conversations with that property owner in particular. Paul, do you have anything to add? Oh, it's, it's our. Then, we are the property owner for that.
So then, let's pave it. I know it's funding you now, right?
Yeah, it's something, it's definitely something we can consider and look at. It's also, I'll just note, part of the, the experience of parking problems, both downtown and along Mission Boulevard, that I will say we as planners hear a lot, are from the state's movement towards not requiring parking, especially close to transit. So right now, like no parking is required for new development downtown, because we're so close to a Bart station. Many people have talked both of our ears off about, you know, why that might be or not be appropriate, which is why our assets of our municipal lots and garages are huge. There's a lot of cities that have Bart stations that don't have that free municipal parking around it. But yeah, creative solutions are definitely something that we can look at. And it's something that DHIA was especially telling us to look at, is to look at our city-owned properties and see what we can do there.
Yeah, one of my questions I skipped over was, in the analysis report, they stipulated three areas that offer the greatest potential for improvement. Parking availability obviously is one of them. I was curious if the city agreed. I assumed that they agree that that's one of the top three priorities. Is, can I, is that a right assumption?
I will say, our transportation division, I've been with the city for seven years, and at least since I've been here, there used to be a thought that we have plenty of parking downtown, plenty of free parking downtown. And now, especially as we're densifying and we're getting some more developments, especially people living downtown, there is a thought that that is a limited resource, and it's something that we need to be protective of.
Okay, thank you. I'm finished, thank you.
Commissioner Gobbi?
Thank you, Chair Hardy. Thank you for the comprehensive report and all the work that you've put into this, and the immense amount of outreach to the various sectors in the city. I think it's a really strong start to something that's, that's really, has the potential to transform our city. Having said that, I wanted to know what the difference between the wider discrepancy and the deposit amount between the, the CUPs and the AUPs?
That's a great question. All of our planning applications, our entitlement applications, have deposits required, an initial deposit. Basically, instead of having flat fees for these types of applications, we bill our time hourly. So say, there are 10 staff people that review an application, we each have different billing rates, we put those hours into the application, and we draw that down from a deposit account. So because AUPs, administrative use permits typically take less time to review, they have a lower initial deposit required. So if somebody comes and says, hey, I want to open up a new recreation facility in town, I, here's my AUP application, we only require that deposit of $2,000. Whereas a conditional use permit, since that has to come before this body, we know it's going to take more time. We'll have to add in, say like preparation of a staff report and things like that into the time that we have to review the application. So our initial deposit that we ask for is higher, it's $6,000. I will also add, to be transparent, very often, the initial deposit is not enough to cover the application cost, especially if somebody, an applicant is maybe newer to the development process, and they don't have the most experienced architects, say. And you know, something has to go through several rounds of review to get it consistent with our codes. So while the initial deposit is $2,000 or $6,000, it can certainly be more than that, depending on the complexity of the project and the amount of time it takes to review.
Thank you. And then, I wanted to see if you could clarify what, an example of a small-scale educational facility is?
Yes, we get a lot of requests for those, like downtown especially. Our code kind of thinks of two levels of educational facilities. One is like a school, so like an elementary school or something. And then the other, they'll think of an educational facility that's less than 2,000 square feet, which is very small. We get a lot of requests, especially downtown, and along Mission Boulevard to some degree, for like tutoring centers, or a training facility for, say, like a skill or a trade or something like that, which needs, you know, enough space for a classroom or two, so maybe, you know, 2,000 square feet's not going to cut it for them. But again, they're not the same type of use as like an elementary school or a high school. So when we're looking at maybe making the process easier for small educational uses, we're really targeting kind of those types of uses that we see come in, that would be great adds to our community, especially our education city, as our mayor talks about. But right now, we're having trouble opening, because they're finding they're having to go through use permit processes, because they're like a little over that 2,000-square-foot threshold. That's just a little too small for them.
Thank you. And then, my other, so I have comments, that's the extent of my questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Hammond?
Hello. Thank you again for the report. It was a lot to, to digest in a short period of time, and I'm happy that we're going to be able to revisit it in the future. So, a couple of questions. As far as making beer and wine sales more permissible, does this give an unfair advantage to those already established businesses? Or does this change in use in zoning, apply universally through the city?
That's a good question. If anything, it would give an advantage to new businesses coming in, because they are existing businesses that have beer and wine sales. And again, I should specify, we're not talking about restaurants here. So if, if you're a full-service restaurant that's serving beer or wine, as long as food sales make up at least 50% of your gross receipts, you're considered a restaurant, and that's pretty widely permissible across town. What we're talking about are the breweries that people have said are very popular, wine shops, things like that, which right now, most places where they're allowed need to go through a CUP process. So again, that means bringing them before you all to see if that would be an allowable use. I will say, this is one of the things that we specifically talked to the police department about, because again, you know, they're the ones that handle problems if they're going to come up. And they were pretty open to this, to say, you know, if there were parameters put in, specific conditions of approval, you know, dropping something like that from a CUP to an AUP seems reasonable, because we have fewer calls for service or issues associated with, say, a brewery that closes at 9:00 or 10:00 PM than we do with maybe a bar that's open later. So, so, yes, I kind of went around a lot there. I don't know if I completely hit your, your question, but yes, that is kind of our thinking on that.
Yeah, I just went throughout the city, if that was going to be something that they, everybody can take advantage of?
Potentially. And again, this is something that we could be specific about, and only allow in certain zoning districts. Maybe it's more permissible downtown only. You know, maybe it's more permissible on Mission Boulevard. Or maybe it's permissible everywhere. That's something that we would have to look at, to see where we felt it was appropriate. And honestly, something that we'd like your feedback on tonight, if you have thoughts about that.
Okay. In allowing small-scale entertainment activities with a simplified permit process, how small is hall, how small is small? And what do you have in mind for an occupancy limit?
That's a good question. One of the cities, and I'm blanking on it right now, that has a live entertainment permit, limits occupancy to like events that have less than 299 people. These are things typically, or in many cases, that are associated with established businesses. So like, you're a business, maybe you're a bar or a brewery or something, and you want to have a band come and perform. Making a permit for that a little bit easier. Something else I will say we've had questions about, and that is very popular, are things like karaoke places. You know, that's something where, you know, that's a recreation use that could draw a lot of people to town. Right now, that requires a cabaret permit, which means they need to go through a whole CUP process here, and they need to get special permission from the police station and all of that. Maybe that's something that we would want to allow through this more simplified process. Again, if there were certain parameters around it. It's only this many people, it's only open to this, you know, time. And again, this is something that, at least in our initial conversations, the police department was supportive of.
Will these be special event permits?
No, they would be more permanent than that. A special event would be like a one-time thing, you know, something, a street party, a festival, something like that. This would be something to allow those types of businesses to have that type of performance or entertainment on a regular basis.
So is the current permitting process that complicated? And is small-scale live entertainment not already allowed in the majority of the downtown area?
That's a great question. Recently, we updated our alcohol beverage regulations, so that now, certain types of music, live entertainment is allowed at restaurants specifically, which is new, at least new in the last few years. Other than that, it's, it's pretty non-existent. It's something that it's, it's a more onerous process, again, that people, the businesses would face in other cities. So we just don't see a lot of applications for the cabaret process, which is what you would need if you weren't in that restaurant-specific environment.
And to add, it's not just a conditional use permit, but it's actually like a cabaret permit with the police department. So it's kind of two different permits that you have to get.
Okay. And then to echo Commissioner Myers, how will this noise affect the mixed-use residential zones?
Our noise ordinance is in effect for all businesses regardless. So they would still, even if you had, say, live music, amplified music, it would still have the same requirements that essentially say, in, during certain hours measured at the property line, the music, the noise emanating from the property can't be above certain decibel levels. So that would stay in place to protect against that.
Didn't seem like a, that would be a disadvantage to having a live entertainment if you had to shut it off at nine.
Agreed.
Okay. And then identifying specified entertainment zones that would potentially include or carry alcoholic beverages. This one, maybe I have a problem with. Can you give me some examples of the specified entertainment zones in the downtown that you might already have in mind?
This is another one of the ideas that we haven't dug in too deeply yet, again, because this is a little of a new concept for Hayward. It's something we see in bigger cities sometimes, cities that have like real tourist hubs, where you might be able to pop from one place to another. When we talk to our police department, I would, I will say, one thing that came up when we were talking about this concept, is that we really have to work with ABC to see like how we would structure this. So we haven't really gotten to the point where we'd identify specific places. It probably would be in the downtown area, if anywhere. But again, this is one of the things that we want to get feedback from this group on. Does that seem like something we should look into further? Or does that seem like, you know, it's not really appropriate for Hayward?
Because it, it seems to me like it might end up kind of like the Vegas Strip, where people walk around with alcohol, no matter where, no matter when.
I don't, I don't think that is where this would end up for us specifically. But I mean, it's a good point. Like, it might not be appropriate for us. This might not be the move that we want to make right now. So that's some of the feedback we're looking for.
Okay. And then, the other one I maybe have some concerns with, is allowing the accessory commercial units in residential properties. What kind of businesses do you kind of see utilizing an ADU for, for commercial purposes?
In other places in the country that have done this, the most typical types of businesses that I've seen, and you also, I will mention, see these around the Bay Area. Like, there's some of these on, like San Pablo, heading up into Berkeley and things. You'll see like these residential units that have their, their garage that's kind of pushed to the front of the street that's been converted. So it's a lot of like storefronts, retail-type things like that. Studios, fitness studios, somebody that wants to be a personal trainer or something, or a yoga instructor out of their home. You do see a lot of food uses, but again, if that's a concern here, you know, that's something that we could potentially limit. Cafes, things like that.
Wouldn't the health department also have to be involved in something like that?
If it's a food use, yes, they're involved. They have to issue permits to any food use in the city.
And, and just because it's in a residential, this, these businesses would be creating extra parking, or parking problems, foot traffic, noise, and smells that might be not so desirable in a residential neighborhood?
Yeah, that's one of our thoughts as well, of why we wouldn't necessarily want to allow this citywide. Again, there are benefits to that. I mean, usually, these aren't, these types of uses aren't attracting people from a wide race. It's, it's like, you know, people down your street that are like stopping to pick up coffee or something like that. It's, it's meant to gather foot traffic more than having people drive there. But because that is a possibility, depending on what types of businesses that we allow there, that's why we see that it might be more appropriate for some of our residential areas that are very close on the fringes of our more commercial hubs. So something that's already a little bit mixed-use, there's probably already commercials sprinkled in around the residential already, so it feels more appropriate to have that kind of use operate there. For Hayward, at least from staff's opinion, it might not be appropriate in, say, like a very standalone, single-family neighborhood. That might not be the best place for it, at least now.
I would also just add that because this is a relatively new idea that cities are launching into, what it's really, I think, the purpose of these, what they call them ACUs, not ADUs, but ACUs. I like to use my acronyms where I can. It's really to help support neighborhoods. So you may have like a, a person that wants to open a hair salon in their, in their house, and this would be a great place that anyone that lived in the neighborhood, it's really intended to serve the people that live in that neighborhood, so they don't have to get in their car and sit in traffic, and drive down to the store for maybe a, you know, some small little retail item, or to pick up, you know, pick up, maybe somebody wants to sell, maybe they make their own homemade quilts or something, they could actually sell it and have it, rather than, and they may not be able to afford to lease something in a, in a commercial space. So in addition to helping to provide that neighborhood shopping opportunity, so people can actually shop in their neighborhood without having to get in their car, it also, there's an equity issue, because obviously not everyone can afford a large space. And this would, as Elizabeth would point it out, is really intended to help kind of foster new development opportunities that currently don't exist in Hayward. And this is, could be an area that if the commissioner and the council support this approach, we can develop, as we're working through this, we could develop certain performance standards that could be applied to make sure that it doesn't do exactly what we're worried about, which is creating noise. which is creating noise, creating more, an exorbitant amount of traffic and stuff like that. So there are other cities, I think, we can look at, that have been operating in this capacity for a while. I would also say, too, it generates tax revenue for the city, which of course, in today's era, that's always a good, a good thing, right? So these are just ideas that we're floating. We would be remiss if we didn't present this as an option, because it is something that we've, we've heard from, from several potential businesses that would like to open something small.
So then if, if it started to become a problem, I guess, then you would be able to address it?
It's the same thing that we have with a lot of our home occupations. And so we have a home occupation program right now that has certain guidelines that have already been established and codified in our municipal code. And so if, if somebody is opening a home-based business and they're violating one of those, guess what? Your, your home-based permit gets revoked, your business license gets revoked, and you can no longer do business. So there are mechanisms that the city has to be able to make sure that those businesses and the people that live there are good neighbors, in fact, to their community.
Okay. Yeah, and a lot of my other questions are already answered by staff and my fellow commissioners. So thank you very much.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have already been asked and answered as well. But again, thank you both for that presentation. This was clearly a lot of work and a lot of information that you managed to present in such a clear way. So I really do appreciate that. Just though, from listening to some of your answers to other questions, are you making a distinction between parklets and just outdoor dining in general?
They're, they are different things. So yes, I think we would be. This is something that if we wanted to allow one or the other, that would be a decision that we could think about. Obviously, parklets would impact parking spaces, where outdoor dining that's within the right-of-way, within the sidewalk area, wouldn't. So yes, we can treat those differently, and we could potentially move forward promoting one and not the other, if that feels appropriate.
So right now, everything I've read seems to only be about parklets. Would you say that that is correct?
I would say, that's kind of the more popular term for this kind of outdoor dining thing. In different cities, Pleasanton being one of them, you see this along Solano in Berkeley and Albany, for example. It's sometimes, even though they're permanent structures, they're a little bit less expensive to build sometimes, to put in. So if the city is willing to give up the parking spaces, that can be something that's a little bit easier to install, rather than having something more permanent, like we see at Casa de Toro or Buffalo Bills, for example. They're trying to, they're in talks with the city right now to extend their like canopies and things like that. That can be a little bit of a bigger process. So I would say we're open to either. We do know that there's interest from businesses, new restaurants, trying to come into the city to have that outdoor space, more in the, in the permanent, like sidewalk area. But there's also a lot of interest, particularly from the community, who's been to some of these other cities to have, to encourage some of those more parklets that are a little bit more, a little bit more separated from the business. So I'd say they're, they're related, so we kind of couple them together in some places in the report, but they are different. So if we wanted to have both of them, we'd probably have different rules for them, different processes. And, and conversely, we could also allow one to move forward and not the other, if one felt more appropriate.
Thank you. My other question is about the, the survey. And I just want to say, I appreciate you all getting out ahead of, like, doing a lot of outreach around this early. I know that this is probably going to be a long process. And also that you were able to survey 239 community members already at the three downtown street events. So I think that's great for a start. But around the business owner survey, who was it who conducted that survey?
That was our, well, I should say, Sachin and I worked with our intern Finn. He was the person that went door-to-door. So he was a college intern that was with us this summer. And he is the person that went door-to-door to make sure that businesses were aware of the survey, could participate, could ask questions about the project, et cetera.
So of the 51 participants for the business survey, like, what percentage of Hayward businesses is that? Do you know that actually participated?
That I don't know. Paul, do you have any sense of the number of businesses overall in the city?
You said 6,500 businesses? It's only 51?
Yeah. I'll also say, we specifically were targeting more traditional commercial retail businesses, instead of like industrial businesses. Because we've recently redone the industrial section of our code, so that wasn't as much the focus. So we have a pretty healthy industrial sector in town. So at least a good chunk of those businesses were probably not the main target of this project, I'll say.
So he was mostly probably targeting the, like, the downtown area businesses?
Downtown, he went, we gave him a map. He went all over town to different shopping centers and things. But yes, to like more, you know, strip malls in town, retail businesses, restaurants, personal services, things like that, in that nature. Yeah.
So my other question around those was, was the survey administered to the businesses and to the community in different languages?
It was not. Yeah, we only had the survey available in English.
So, okay. So thank you for answering my questions. Do any commissioners have any follow-up questions? If not, we will close the, the questions section. Thank you again. We will move on to public comments at this time. Ms. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item in person or on Zoom?
There are none.
They're all none. Okay. So we will close commis, public comments, and we will move on to commissioner comments. So would anyone like to make comments? Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you, Chair Hardy. So in listening to the conversation around the ACUs, you know, just right now, just what I was hearing, it sounds like, it seems consistent with some of the efforts that, with the food vendor policy, that is, if we're just talking about utilizing the ACUs for, you know, food-related activities. So I just wanted to point that out. I would encourage you to maybe consider thinking about, not the ACUs, but maybe permitting this kind of a use into the neighborhoods, into existing community spaces. And off the top of my head, I'm thinking like the Southgate Community Center, which isn't, I don't think it's that, you use that often. I think they have like a couple dance classes, but of course, that's, you know, would be a partnership with Hurd. But, you know, they have built-in foot traffic already. They have the dog park there, they have the Eden Greenway there, they have the pickleball court. And then they just, you know, redid the playground there. And so it's, you know, and it's right next to the, it's right behind the school. So I'm thinking maybe that might be an alternative to consider, you know, to give small business, you know, entrepreneurs, a space in which to get a sort of a captive audience to, to sell their, their houses. I mean, I mean, their goods, I think it would be a great place to, you know, walk over and get some morning coffee and meet your neighbors and, you know, some homemade goods or something like that. The other thing is, is maybe to consider also small-scale drugstores in, in, in some of the neighborhoods. I'm thinking kind of around, you know, maybe in the Tennyson Corridor. I know that, you know, there are Walgreens, but, you know, some of them have closed. And I know like in college towns and in large cities, in San Francisco, they have these like small targets, just, you know, kind of in script on a corner. And they're among, you know, housing and businesses, and they're just, they're just packed. And because they just sell the very basic necessities. And so I, I'm thinking maybe that might be useful in a, in a bottom-floor, you know, development or multi, multifamily unit that, you know, we, we've approved here on this, on this body. And I think that, I'm really excited about this. And I also want to consider that, in addition to, you know, the, the business-friendly initiative, that maybe we also think of business-friendly, like, in, in terms of the gateways to the city. Like, you know, they, we've talked a lot about businesses and uses and permits and things like that. But I also, you know, don't want to miss out our gateways to the city. We've put some effort into that. We've got a new data center coming up. We've put some in the south part of the city. You know, specifically, maybe between the eastern side of the city, like between Castro Valley and, and then the city boundaries. That's a, that's a really interesting space, because, you know, you've got the creek going under there, so you can't really build any businesses there. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity to just make it a walkable space with, you know, green lush, maybe just some produce stands or something, you know, to get Castro Valley to come over into Hayward. And so I, you know, would also like to think of that, you know, some artwork that the city has been, been championing lately. And then in terms of the, you know, getting businesses here, it seems to me that the vacant properties and the parcels need to be prioritized. We didn't talk a lot about that tonight, but I'm wondering if there's a relationship between the vacant parcels and, and if there's barriers to successfully recruiting businesses. I know we talked a lot about that. Most of the barriers are with the permitting process and the length of time it takes. But I'm also wondering if maybe, in the area that want to locate, if there's just, it's like dead and there's no foot traffic. I'm wondering if maybe we just need to prioritize those first before, you know, approaching some of these businesses, just top of my head. And then also just the timing of the reconfig, reconfiguration of the loop before like, maybe considering that when determining where the parklets are going to be located and where we allow them. And those are my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodbody. Commissioner Hammond?
So kind of piggyback on the parklets, and I like the idea. I think it makes the, the ambience nice for people to enjoy their dining and, but I'm trying to think of where in Hayward we could actually expand the streets, or say, reconfigure the streets and expand the sidewalks. And you mentioned about developing A Street. I just don't see anywhere on A Street where I would feel comfortable on the sidewalk having dinner as cars go racing by. A Street, for the most part, is just a, another freeway, another freeway lane. It seems like B Street and along Main Street, those might be the best places that we could reconfigure those landscapes to, to accommodate the parklets and street dining. But it would also be kind of an expensive construction project. Is the city of Hayward able to or willing to remodel downtown to accommodate those kind of, those kind of, those kind of, those kind of areas? I know, maybe back to the questions, but I, I just don't see right now how Hayward can afford to, to do that. Also, I, I, you mentioned also about the, the cinema. I'm not quite sure what you might have for plans for the, for the cinema, but I talked to people, and they've said they'd like to see, like, to be able to host live concerts or recitals, or dance competitions, hold their graduations there. And I don't know if Hayward could support a symphony, or even perhaps comedy events. But that might be a way of making use of that building, other than, than just, than just watching movies. And I realize that the idea of, of all of this is to help revitalize the downtown by offering certain incentives. But if you're going to streamline the permitting process, then I think that it should be streamlined without exception, whether or not it's located in downtown or not. And from the key takeaways I see from attachment two, I like what other California cities are implementing in their downtown plans, especially the parklets and sidewalk cafes. And I think that many of the strategies will also work for the city of Hayward. What all of those cities have in common is that people feel safe and comfortable, and that the atmosphere is pleasant and the surroundings are attractive. So streamlining the process, amending the zoning and use regulations are a start. But we have to improve on the traffic circulation, remove the blight, fill the empty spaces, and attract quality establishments to open shop downtown that enliven and enrich the downtown, so people come from outside the five-minute radius. And other cities will want to also spend their time and money there. But also, we need to invest in good-paying jobs here in Hayward, so that people have the money to dine out, enjoy a show, or go shopping. I think downtown Hayward has a long way to go, in my opinion, to match the ambience of some of the other cities that attract a strong downtown presence, but it's not an unreachable goal. I think a challenge is finding investors who are willing to take a chance on the downtown to get things started. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Okay, I'll quickly go through these. Making beer wine sales more permissible? I'm a big yes on that. I think that that's a smart thing to do. And I'm not a big beer drinker, but I just am yes on the whole idea. Okay, allowing small-scale live entertainment activities with a simplified permitting process? Triple yes. Anytime we could simplify the permitting process, across the board, I'm all for that. Identifying specific entertainment zones to include open, carry alcoholic beverages? I am a yes on that. I think that we just need to use some extra precautions or deeper thinking on where we would delineate and how we would control that delineation on where those lines of allowing open drinking to be. Allowing ACUs? So we passed some ordinances on the vendors. And I feel like we haven't even made a dent in controlling it yet. And I know that we haven't brought only one or two, maybe, onboard in the permitting process. So I'm not against this, and I like a lot of cities that really have conquered this. But to me, I feel like we should shelve it maybe until the first iteration of amendments on it or something, maybe a year or something. I, I like the income from it, but I just, like, if I just bought a car that I can't afford, I'm not going to buy a second car. And I feel with the vendor issue that I hear nonstop from the public, I feel like this is a potential, I know it's a different thing, but I just feel like it's got a relation to it. Okay, and then other land uses or activities should be allowed? I think we should just continue to disallow street shows. I don't want to have those. And then, for the changes of the Hayward codes and practices, I like that we're allowing a specific for data centers to have their own category. I think that's important, because then we won't have to do special, special permissions for like the parking restrictions and stuff, I assume. We often approve large projects and then wait months or years for their completion. So I'm in favor of adding extra fencing and maintenance on these properties, because a lot of them just stay vacant for a year. So I want to make sure that they do, we hold them to keep it, the blight down. Regarding the boarded-up businesses that contribute to the blight that was mentioned in the report, I think maybe we could be creative. Maybe if we could spend just a little bit of dollars, it doesn't have to be the highest artist, but maybe we could get an artist to go over there and paint on plywood. Nobody wants to see plywood. But if I'm marketing something, if I'm marketing a chair for sale, I'm not just going to put a chair in front of a white thing. I'm going to make it a fun marketing event. So maybe we could just pay a thousand dollars or something to just get something fun to look at. And I think, believe it or not, oh, and I am, I am a past resident of Pleasanton. I love their downtown. Of course, it was back in the 1900s, so it was decades ago. But I do think that there is a roadway to becoming that downtown. And I love that we're starting to create the path towards that. So thanks for everything on that.
Commissioner Lo?
Thank you. So I have a little bit different of opinion. I actually want to make sure that we, that Hayward keeps our vibe and doesn't try to be another city. Because I think that Pleasanton is, has be another city because I think that Pleasanton is, has its own vibe, which is great. And I think we all would agree that it does have its own vibe, but Hayward does too and I like our vibe, which is one of the reasons why I'm here. And I keep saying vibe because I have a teenager, so, but you get the point. I do think we need to streamline the process. I really appreciate staff working so hard to make us more competitive as a city as it relates to bringing in new economic development, making sure that the process is much more conducive to having potential business owners not just pass us by when they think of places that they might want to set up their business. I really appreciate that. And I do feel like after reading the materials and listening to the presentation, that staff is committed to maintaining the high level, high standards that we have. I know this particular planning commission, as well as our city council and most of the residents I talked to, really do want us to continue to pay attention to greenhouse gas emissions and, you know, environmental concerns, but also be compassionate towards the community that we have that might be unhoused and to be, we also are a community that really loves art and displaying art. I mean, we have our vibe, we know who we are, let's stick with that. And I really appreciate the fact that I believe staff knows who we are and you're really considering who we are as a community as you move forward with this. So please just don't lose sight of that, that from my standpoint, I wouldn't want to become any other city. I think that if we create or fine-tune our vibe and make it even more unique or make it something that is exciting and new, maybe youthful or maybe eclectic, I don't know what it is, but there might be something that we could grasp a hold of that will make us even more desirable than some other cities that are surrounding us for bringing in new businesses. So I just want to make sure that we are always thinking ahead for the future. Where do we want to see our city in five, 10, 15 years? Where do we want to see our downtown in five, 10, 15, 20 years? What should it look like? And whatever it looks like, it still needs to have the essence of Hayward and who we are as a community, as a part of it. As far as ACUs, I don't think those should be by right. I don't think that's what you're suggesting anyway, but I just want to say that. I just want to make sure that we don't end up with more vacant storefronts and especially when we have all these residents with the stores on the bottom floor that are vacant, I don't want to approve so many ACUs that people start saying, oh, well, then I'll just have an ACU instead of having a storefront. And then we end up with just more boarded-up storefronts. So I would, there really has to be a balance in that. We have to be very, very careful not to disincentivize creating a brick-and-mortar business in the downtown area. We just have to create rules and craft the rules that make sense for our city and our city alone. I agree that our, with the materials, that our streets are confusing for some people. I have a very good friend who has said to me, oh, I wish there was some place to go and eat, or I wish there was some place to shop or whatever in your city. And I'm like, no, what are you talking about? We have this place and this place and this place. And the response that I often get is, oh, but I don't want to deal with that downtown mess that you guys have going on in your city. I'd rather just skip it and go to a different city. And I'm constantly trying to talk up people and explain to them that once you get used to it, it's just really not that difficult, it's not that complicated. But people from outside do think the loop is very complicated and they don't want to navigate it. And so I'm very excited to hear that you guys are thinking about that and talking to transportation about that. The other thing that I want staff to, I'm glad to hear that staff is considering and I really want you to consider is safety. I think that we have a little bit of a reputation that maybe we don't deserve of being, not being as safe as some of our neighboring cities. I don't think we deserve that. I remember talking to someone and their perception of the crime in downtown, to me, was very skewed based upon what I've heard from the police department. And so we, I think, and it's just my personal opinion, I think we have a little work to do to try to change that perception outside of our city. I think that it's important to change that perception because people go to certain cities for entertainment and recreation because they feel safe. They go to certain cities with their families because they feel safe there. And they might stay in their community if they feel safe. Those of us who live here, we feel safe walking around or hanging around different places with our kids in the city, but we know what's safe and we know we feel safe with our families. But if people from outside don't feel that or don't know how safe it is, they're not going to bring their families here. So we really need to work on the perception of our city and what we're projecting out there. I also want to make sure that we are supporting our businesses once they get here. So bringing them in is one thing, but once we get them here, we have to support them. That means we have to continue to communicate with them. We have to continue to promote them. I loved, I think it was during the pandemic, there, on our social media, they would highlight a different business every so often and I watched, I think I watched all of them. They were so great and I loved it. And we could do even shorter versions of that for Twitter. We should have a TikTok page where we're doing it. The staff can do the little dance that the kids are doing. I don't know, but the point is, I volunteer Carla, but I'm kidding. No, but I really believe that it's important to support the businesses after they are here. One thing I was very impressed with in the materials was that on the page where it talked about our businesses, our local businesses, we have a lot of businesses that have been here six to 30-plus years. We're very, very fortunate in that. So we really do manage to keep people here, which shows that, you guys, it's actually a safe place. So, but, but also we want to make sure that as we move forward, again with that five, 10, 20-year plan, that the businesses that are coming in now also reach that level of longevity in our city. So we have to constantly be thinking ahead and thinking to the next, I think even 25, 30 years and just think about how, anticipate how things are going to change, whether it's with technology like AI or how things are changing as far as the job markets are concerned or things like that. And we need to be almost one step ahead of what's going on right now. I also, and one of those people who loves the festivals, I love the festivals. I love not just our ones that we had, you know, each month during the summer, but I love our Earth Day Festival and I love going to all of these things. So kudos to whatever staff is doing that and I hope that we will keep that up and keep promoting Hayward in that way and really, really promote, take those opportunities when we're having those events to promote our businesses on social media at those events, at the event, but also on social media before and after the events, to talk about what businesses did at the events, which businesses showed up at the events, those sorts of things. And I just want to make sure that we are competitive and that we are able to sustain whatever we bring in. Whatever we bring in, build up and build out, we've got to make sure that we nurture and support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I have many comments and you just were so, that was very well done and it's hard for me to follow that because my comments are going to be all over the place and so apologies in advance. So I'm very excited about this. So please, anything I say, please don't take as I'm not excited or don't appreciate all that you did. I'm just, I was very much just processing this and thinking about Hayward and just like, similar to what Commissioner Lo just said, I was just like, why are we comparing ourselves to some of these cities? I was like, I see us as not necessarily a college town, but more of a college town. Like I was like, why aren't we leaning into that? Like, why are we comparing ourselves to some places I see as really demographically different, like economically different, like they're just, I don't know, there's some things that were there that is just like, I don't want to be Emeryville, I don't want to be Pleasanton, like not to knock those cities, there's great things there. I have friends that live there, I hang out in different places on occasion, but I love Hayward. And I want us to be us and to thrive. So just some of the things that really stood out to me, so I thought that the best practices report was really great. I really appreciate a lot of the things that they said. I thought it was interesting that even though significant singles and flourishing families are the two groups that live closest to downtown, it's like, but at the same time, they were saying like, we want other people though to come. So it was like, so why are we focusing on what those two groups want the most? Not that we don't care what they want, but we also want other people to come, right? So if those two groups are a couple, some of the people who want like the small-scale education services, like Commissioner Goodbody asked about that and I appreciate that, I was wondering the same thing, like what is that? Like that seems like a very like niche type of service to want, like, and that's great if we have like one or two more of those, but like I can't imagine having like several of those or something. Like would that bring in people from other places to Hayward? So some of those types of things, like I didn't know, like it seemed contradictory sometimes. This may be controversial to other people. I'm not a fan of parklets. I am a fan of outdoor dining. That's why I asked if there's a distinction there. I definitely feel like parklets were something that came out of the pandemic. I know San Francisco did have them before the pandemic, but most other cities did not. I feel that they are being kept around for reasons that are sometimes aligned with gentrification, just to be totally transparent with that. And again, I feel like some of the cities that have them are cities that do not mirror what I feel like is the population of Hayward. However, I feel like outdoor dining does not feel the same way. I did try to do some research, looked up some papers like the Yale Law Journal and some other things that kind of have some studies around that. I couldn't find anything definitive, like proving it one way or the other necessarily, but just, yeah, just if that distinction could be made or looked at a little bit more, I would appreciate that, just as you all go forward with this. Let's see, I also definitely thought the perception of safety issues was big and appreciated that that was talked about in the report too. As far as the actual questions that were asked, so making beer and wine sales more permissible, I'm in favor of that if Hayward PD is not having an issue with that as well. I love live entertainment, I'm definitely in favor of that. Entertainment zones, you specified, like it would probably be downtown area, that seemed great as well. The accessory commercial units, I too had some pause with that just because I really actually liked the way that Jeremy described it and what it could do for a neighborhood. But again, I'm not sure if for me that aligned as much as what I felt like this was trying to do overall for the city as far as like bringing in businesses and other people and those types of things. So while I love the spirit of it and could see it being something to look at in the future, I don't know for sure if I'm all the way there with it just yet. Other land uses and activities that I was thinking of, I just was sitting around thinking like, what do I, what do I go to other places for? What things can I not find in Hayward? Often it's things like meeting spaces and things like that, like that are not necessarily like entertaining, but it's like, we're giving money to other cities to do those types of things. Coworking spaces, I feel like that comes up sometimes. Sometimes catering companies and things like that, I feel like we pump out money sometimes to neighboring cities for things like that at work. Definitely, of course, retail storefronts and things like that. But I do really, as much, like I brought up the college town thing, there are businesses, and we talked about this at a previous meeting, that clearly want to be in Hayward. And we even talked about how like, could there be too many of certain kinds of places? And I don't want to go there again. But there's people who want to be here. We have demographics that match their business models. Like, is it just our processes that are getting in the way of more of that? The timelines, the cost, and if that is, you know, what you all are finding, like yes, let's just fix that because we've got all these college kids, we've got young people, like we've got families, like all those things. So I just, yes, I would be in support of any of those things that we could figure out. So that concludes my not clear comments and yes, Commissioner Meyer.
They were very clear. I wanted to clarify, I totally 100% agree with Commissioner Lo on there's value in Pleasanton. I wasn't insinuating that I wanted to become Pleasanton. However, I want to mirror the vibe, or not the vibe, the community involvement that happens because if you're in Pleasanton, downtown is something that we all talked about. We always were ready to go to an event there. That's what I want us to be. I don't want to be exactly any other city, but the amount of community engagement that goes on is something to strive for, for almost any city. And I also think that we are on the right track with our trunk or treat, which I think brings a ton of people, with our Juneteenth, which I love, and with our summer street fairs, those are really, really great things that are really community, Pleasanton community-esque. So yes, I think we need to just keep on that same track and have our sights set on that much community involvement and just wanted to clarify that.
Are there any other Commissioner follow-up comments? All right, if not, thank you again to staff. And we will move on to our next items, which are the approval of our minutes from the May 22nd, 2025 and June 12th, 2025 meetings. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
It looks like we have a question about the minutes. Commissioner Myers?
So as always, I've been the first to say how awesome these are always done, but I did notice that on item number two, there was no person designated as a seconding the motion.
For which, that May 22nd? So can we table the May 22nd minutes and just make a motion for the June 12th minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second for the June 12th minutes?
A second.
Ms. Allen, could you call roll?
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens absent. Chair Hardy.
Yes. So motion passes and we will now move on to our commission reports and the first is the oral report on planning and zoning matters.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I hope you all had a wonderful, wonderful summer. I did want to report out, as many of you may have heard, that our former Commissioner Frank O'Cloughson has resigned from the Planning Commission effective last week. I did want to thank her. I know she received a letter from the mayor, but I did want to thank her for her contribution, not only to the Hayward community, but also to her guidance and feedback to staff as well as this commission. So I wish her much success. On that note, I also wanted to announce that the council did complete commission and committee interviews earlier this week and has selected a replacement commissioner that will be sworn in next Tuesday, September 2nd. That commissioner is Vasco Yorov, who I have not met personally yet, but I'm looking forward to. And they will be sworn in along with the other committee or commission members that were also being selected. So just wanted to make that announcement. Also wanted to communicate that the next Planning Commission meeting, which is scheduled for September 11th, will likely be canceled. We don't have anything currently on the agenda, but we do have a couple items for the second meeting in September, which is on September 25th. The first item being a cannabis dispensary, which is proposing to go on the foothill at the old vacant Walgreens site by, close to Grove Way. And then this, and that would be a requesting- And then this, and that would be requesting a recommendation from the commission to the city council. And then the second one is a rezoning on a parcel on Calhoun, which will also be a recommendation from the Planning Commission to city council. So two items scheduled for the 25th. And other than that, I just hope everyone has a wonderful and safe Labor Day weekend. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any announcements or requests? Commissioner Lo?
I just wanted to say, since we've been talking about this all evening, one of the things we talked about was just the community, sense of community in Hayward. And I just wanted to say, I went to the, I think I went to all three Hayward street parties this summer, and this last one last week was incredible. The amount of people that were there, I'd never seen at one of the street fairs before. I literally could barely walk and get through the crowd to get from one end to the other, and it was absolutely beautiful to see. And I hope that we will continue to have these festivals and events, and I think those things will bring people in as well as they, if we show up, then others will want to show up because they're going to want to see what's so amazing that that many Hayward residents show up for it. So it was just great and it just made me super proud to walk through the Hayward Street Party last week.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners?
No?
Okay. Well, with that, our meeting is adjourned at 8:55 PM.
Recording stopped.